This is the regular meeting of the Arts and Culture Commission. Today is Thursday, October 16, 2025. Madam Recording Secretary, please take roll call.
Commissioner Russell?
Here.
Commissioner Wu?
Here.
Commissioner Lopez-Guerra? Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Ochoa?
Here.
Commissioner Peña-Marie?
Here.
Commissioner Bermejo?
Here.
Thank you. We have quorum.
Seeing a quorum, this meeting is officially called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. You may be seated. At this time, members of the public may address the Arts and Culture Commission regarding any non-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the committee. No action may be taken on non-agenda items unless authorized by law. Does the public have any comments they wish to share with the Commission? Please note that you have three minutes to speak.
Just to make a note that we received three ecomments, and you have copies of them, and you also received emails this afternoon. And then we have one public comment present, Alicia Ross.
Buenas noches. Good evening. Welcome to the new commissioners who I've never met before. Hello to all of you who've been working alongside me the last decade, trying to help our arts community, and Tram, and Mark, and Bianca, and everybody else. So you got a lot of information from me very last minute this morning. I really, really hope that you take the time to go through every document. There's a lot of information there for you, a lot of helpful information, especially in my second public comment about an upcoming public on art policy. It has really great guidelines for an RFP process with community engagement. These are things that we have worked on for years in this body, outside of this body, and now in the Parks Commission. And I think it gives you a great example of what an RFP could be also for grants. Obviously, this was tailored more for public art than a grant process. So I'm here to add a little bit of context or advice on your upcoming grant process for the RFP. So besides, you know, maybe going through that guideline and like some of my recommendations, is that when the grants first happened, thank gosh, 2014, 2015, the initial grants, there used to be two buckets of money. I call them buckets to explain them better. So the Arts and Culture Department used to divide the money into two buckets. One bucket for arts nonprofits and organizations, and one bucket for individual artists. So let's say you got $200,000 from the city manager. A hundred went to arts organization, and a hundred went, we never had that much, but I'm just saying, and a hundred went to individual artists. So there were two separate processes, right? An arts organization has to submit very different things than an individual artist. But when they're graded, they're not graded together, right? You have an arts organization, maybe that they could hire a grant writer. They have an administration. An individual artist doesn't have that. And I know that we're doing things, and thank you so much in the last public comments, and that you're, you know, thinking about more educational components for artists and empowerment. But when you have two grant applications, one for an individual artist and one for organization pitted against each other for the same bucket, I just think in the last couple of years, what I've seen happen is the organizations get most of the money, and there's only like three or four artists that get the grants. So my advice to you is to divide that money, and just have a bucket for individual artists and a bucket for organizations, and keep your process, you know? Kind of go back to what 2015, 2016 thing was doing, maybe go back to those files. I'm here to help you. I've always been available. Give me a call. I have a lot of stories and a lot of experience throughout the years trying to navigate and advocate for money. You know, in the last year, we did a really good job in forming a campaign around the arts, and we were able to get city council, thanks to all of you. So remind your city council persons every time about advocating for funding. Mid-year budget's coming up. Don't forget about us. Write your emails. Make sure that arts always are top-ic. And then the other thing is an unfortunate news I just found out like about an hour ago. So I submitted an extra public comment five minutes ago via email, just because I want you to get that email forwarded. This is information from 2017. So in 2017, Arts OC Downtown, Inc., applied with the city of Santa Ana for a cultural arts district through the California Arts Council. That application was not inclusive of smaller organizations or people of color at all. So I did a public request of information and found out a lot of unfortunate things at that time, that artists were being named in the application, our pictures were being used, but we were not part of the process of application. I am sorry to tell you, it's happening again. So the information is that the CAC has selected now Santa Ana to be a finalist again. So I'm wondering why that cultural destination wasn't talked about here as the Art Commission, if the city did partner, if that is true. I just found out this information this morning. What I do know is that the CAC is coming to Santa Ana next Thursday at 9:00 a.m. at the Bowers Museum to talk about us being a finalist. And I believe the organization in partnership is Victor Poyan, and I'm not sure who else. So I encourage you to please look at that, find out what happened. Why are we at the same place we were in 2017, without any inclusion of community organizations, smaller organizations? I also found out the Grand Central was not part of this process, even though it's noted as it is, but they were not included in this process at all. They just found out this morning. So it's concerning. So I just wanted to say thank you so much for taking these things seriously into accounting. I think as we move forward, and there's going to be less money, the more important thing here is creating more transparency and better structure so we can get through things quicker and better. So thank you so much.
Thank you for the public comment. Are there any other public comments, including on Zoom?
No more comments, but I did forward the email that Alicia Rojas just sent before the meeting started. I sent it to everybody.
Thank you so much, Bianca. All right, and with that, we will move into the consent calendar. This is the time for the Commission to consider matters under Consent Calendar, Items 1 and 2. Do I have a motion to consider Items 1 and 2?
I motion.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hernandez, for a motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Commissioner Bermejo. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Opposed.
So point of order, since there is an opposition, does that open it up for discussion, or is it just a vote?
It's a vote.
That means the matter was approved by a four, sorry, a five-to-one vote? Yes.
And who said no?
It was Commissioner Russell.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving then on to the Work-Study Session, we have three items under Work-Study Session. Please note that there will be no motion or action taken with these items. The first item under Work-Study Session is investing in the Artist Grant 2024 to 2025 Grantee Presentations.
My apologies, Chair. All the presenters, there are going to be about four presenters. They rescheduled for next, or for future dates.
All right, we'll move on into the second item then, which is the discussion of the funding priorities for fiscal year 2025 to 2026. And if, Bianca, if you could put up the presentation, thank you. And just as a reminder for everyone listening from home, those who are here, fellow commissioners, this was a conversation that we began to have in July, actually. And last time we met in August, we came together and went over a brief presentation that the Ad Hoc Subcommittee pulled together. Based on the discussion that we had in August, as well as what we had discussed together as an Ad Hoc Subcommittee, we determined, next slide, please. And just so that everyone's on the same page here. Sorry, give me one moment. As a discretionary budget, our Commission has $200,000 for the fiscal year 2025 to 2026 for programmatic purposes only. This is separate from the Artist Grant, as well as the Graffiti Arts Project and Mural Restoration Project. This is separate for our programmatic purposes only. So in creating these budget priorities, we wanted to make sure that the proposed programming and the projects that we are going to propose to the Commission, that we are adequately staffed so that we can sufficiently carry it out and make sure that the programming is done well. So this is something that the city and all of us can be proud of. So if you can go to the next slide, please. Again, I know it's still very small here. There were some adjustments made from the last time we met, but just as a quick review, $25,000, we want to set aside to professional development workshops for, to develop and build the skills for local artists. The timeline would be adjusted for this, of course, but it would basically be six workshops next year, covering grant writing, insurance and budget, marketing and outreach, mentorship and recruitment, business structure, whether that's LLC or nonprofit, and portfolio presentation and review. And the last time we discussed this, there was not very much contention over this part of the budget that we proposed. As for the event sponsorships, we put that as $175,000 because we wanted to ensure that as much money as possible went back into the community to really encourage and build out the economy of working artists in this city. So some of the adjustments here that are different from last time, I included also that the application would also prioritize those who have fewer resources to seek funding. And so that could be inclusive of creating these very clear budget, or buckets, for organizations or individuals, really similarly to the way we currently do our artist grants and the way we've done our sponsorships in the past as well. And then for the funding is not only to be seen as seed money to help get events off the ground, but also as money to sustain events and programming that already is established within the city. And so those are the two major changes that have made it into this presentation. At this point, I will open it up for my fellow commissioners to make comments, ask questions, and hopefully we can actually agree on this today so that we can move forward and begin to implement this and start moving the money the way it needs to be moved.
Just because I just caught that. So for the six workshops from January to June, did you mean, or did we mean 2027, after the contracts were signed in November of '26?
That was my bad. So the timeline, so it's supposed to be September 2025, October 2025, sign contracts 2025, and then the six workshops in 2026. Because we won't have, the money won't roll over into the 2026, 2027 fiscal year.
Okay, so we already passed the September. So then this kind of gets pushed a little bit perhaps, so that the release of the RFQ could potentially be in December? The deadline is mid-January and sign contracts by February? And then having the six workshops be potentially from February to July or something? You know, just kind of, is that more or less what it would be? Like, is there like a time cutoff that we would want these workshops to happen by? Is it June 2026?
I believe we do need to expend all of this budget before the end of the fiscal year. So that's really the cutoff here. If this means then that the timeline for the workshops themselves is every two weeks instead of once every month, that is what it will need to be.
And then this is for preparation for them, folks that attend these workshops, to get training and education and preparation for them to write grants, not for next year, but perhaps for the following year, perhaps? Because when is the deadline for the grant, the artist grants? Okay, do we have like? So do we have like an idea, perhaps by the end of the year, perhaps? Okay. Okay. Yeah, so yeah, it would then seem that these workshops, you know, even in the best of scenarios, if we were able to agree to something here today, then they would be for like the following year's artist grants of preparation, not for this year. So in any case, thanks for the clarification. You know, I feel, you know, we had a robust conversation about this item. There was a lot of conversations from the community, you know, input as far as like, yeah, how do, how do we make sure that we are building up the capacity from the community to apply for these grants? You know, and then this is the story anywhere. I just came from a conference today when we're talking about, you know, the big fish and the little fish and the, you know, in the pond. And the big fish always get, you know, all the funds from the state, and the little fish, you know, gets nothing. Usually, the little fish has to partner up with the big fish, you know, in incubator type of format. Perhaps that's something that, I know, I love my analogies. So, you know, that could happen, but in any case, I think this is a great way to start working towards equity, to build up the knowledge for our artists, and, you know, while, you know, keeping the reality in place that, you know, for folks that want to do art in our city, or in the county, or in the state, or nationally, they are needing to develop their skillset to write grants, to promote their art, you know, to, so that they can get these fundings. And so, yeah, while at the same time allowing for other abilities to apply for sponsorships outside of the artist grants, like the event sponsorships, that can still allow them to get funding to do their art. So those are some initial comments. I'm looking forward to hearing from my colleagues on this matter.
Two questions. I'll start with the professional development workshops. So with six workshops, that means there are about 4,000? That cost we're looking at? Was that based on, how did you come to that number? I'm really curious.
That was inclusive of like space rental as well. So it's inclusive of getting a facilitator to build out the materials, hosting this, and having a space as well.
Can't use city spaces, community spaces?
During our discussion, we looked at other examples in the past, and using city facilities typically meant that there would be less turnout from the community because city facilities typically are a little bit removed from community spaces.
Seems a little high for me. The second question is related to the item number, the third item in the event sponsorships. It says that Santa Ana residents will be prioritized. Correct me if I'm wrong, I think event sponsorships, the process was a yes, no, and then we appointed or designated an amount that we approved. I'm just, is that correct? I'm just curious, how would Santa Ana residents be prioritized when there's only a yes, no, and an amount as decisions we would make as a?
So as the bullet point says, this would follow the guidelines from the RFP Subcommittee. So dependent on whatever that Subcommittee determines would get worked into the application process for this event sponsorship as well, to make sure that there is an actual point value in order to prioritize Santa Ana residents and organizations based in Santa Ana.
Are we all feeling like this is, this makes sense as a group? Do we feel, is there any feelings of maybe this isn't skewed properly? I just want to throw it out there. I'm not sure if this is the way to go about it, but just going to throw that out.
Do any other commissioners want to weigh in?
I would feel uncomfortable if my constituents or the constituents that my council member represents found out that we were spending $4,000 on a workshop. I just, I would much rather see some of that money be devoted to artists stronger way.
What seems like, what do you think would be a more fair, reasonable amount?
I think either expand the number of workshops so there are more. I feel like $2,000 for a workshop, and maybe trying to prioritize spaces that are free, or could be more, you know, I'm sure there would be cafes or places like that that might be more open, you know, in terms of feeling for community members. But I just, we have so little money, and I know the artists are always saying, you know, want more, and here we are, not giving it to artists.
So do you have a proposal for what amount of funding you think you would feel comfortable with supporting?
And I would rather expand the number of workshops or possibly reduce this amount by five or seven?
Yeah. Based on the conversation that we have within the Subcommittee, you know, and again, based on what other, what other places had been spending on these types of workshops, and also with the goal of, you know, making it like appealing to, you know, just high-quality professional development folks that could do this. I think that's where we landed on the 25,000. I, to be honest, I don't, I'm not married to that number. Like, I think I was relying on other folks that were kind of bringing those, these funds up. I'm fine with 20,000. But as far as like, oh, let's do it in a park, or doing it, you know, like, no, I don't feel comfortable with that. Like, we, these folks need to be, have enough funding to pay their staff, to, you know, to pay for a space, and, you know, and to pay for supplies and all these things. So, you know, I would support 20,000, but not less than that. And to make it in a professional setting that's open and available to the community. But of course, as we know, with inflation and everything, everything is going up. So, you know, places to rent are just expensive, depending on how many people we want to have into these places, including, you know. So like, hopefully, where these paid ads and things like that are added into this expenses. So it's to make sure that these are heavily attended.
I think also, we were trying to find, if I remember correctly, Tram, too, like, what did we think the cost would be to bring in organization? Because clearly, you cannot do all this yourself, but to bring in someone to help facilitate these meetings? So I think that's where part of that cost, too, we're trying to figure out what made sense so that she's not carrying all the burden, what makes financial sense? I mean, if it's cheaper, obviously better for us. We could use those funds for artists, but then also what makes sense? And I don't know if we have any idea of what it costs to bring in, whether we do it through an organization, or we hire someone that actually facilitates this kind of meetings? Do we have any idea of what that cost could potentially be? Oh.
Okay.
I'll add too that we do want to make sure that this is, like, as my fellow commissioners are saying, as professional as possible. We don't want this amount to be so low that it doesn't attract a quality organization to be able to lead these presentations. And if it's so low that organizations don't think it's worth their time to be able to do, then the worst thing that's possible is that this doesn't happen at all. That's one of the reasons why we lean toward the 25,000. That said, I'm also not completely married to the 25,000. I do think the 25,000 would be best for us to attract the most quality application possible. And given inflation and everything, I do think the 25,000 is better. If the Commission feels that 20,000 is a more appropriate amount for this workshop, I'm willing to go to that. But I do believe that 25 would set a particular standard for the quality. And I also want to note that the funds would be through, it would be an RFQ with a reimbursement process for the expenses. That's what we discussed during our meeting. Oh, for their expenses, organizations' expenses. That's what we had discussed, yeah. And if that is the case, then if they don't spend the full 25,000, that money still stays within our budget. Is that correct? Yeah.
Wait, are you saying that if the money is not used, then it doesn't maybe roll over to event sponsorships? But if we allocated it for PD and it did not get used entirely, what happens to the remaining funds? Can it be pushed into sponsorships?
Well, could we, is there someone that can confirm or verify that? Because I, to that point, if we don't, we put the 25, we vote for the 25,000, but we end up using 20, could 5,000 roll into the event sponsorship side?
I think, I'm Mark Morley, Economic Development. I think if the Commission votes as a whole that that's what you guys want to do with the funding, then that's fine.
Are there any additional questions, points of discussion, concerns?
But if it's going to be like, by, you know, by the first beginning of the year, I'm not sure when the event sponsorships are going to, you know, and usually it's just open until all the money has gone, and it takes us several months. You know, I imagine it's going to be well into next year before all of the funds are spent. Anyways, I don't see that if we are, take a vote and start getting the ball rolling now, I don't see that being an issue. Okay, that was my question earlier. So our fiscal year ends in June. Okay, so then you're right.
Given that, I think that it may be best just to do a flat $25,000 amount for this professional development workshop. That way, we ensure that it is, like, the amount that we are offering for these organizations to lead these workshops is competitive. It is transparent to those organizations as well, so they can understand what the work is they're getting into, how much there is expected of them, and what specific timelines and what deadlines need to be met, well ahead of time, so that there's no question about those things. My recommendation would be to stick with the 175 and the 25,000.
Can I ask one more question? Has anyone attended a workshop on one of these categories that can speak to the structure or the need for the funding to be so high?
Chair, unless there's other comments from colleagues that haven't spoken, I'd like to move to approve the item as is with the amounts of 175 and 25.
Given that this is a work-study session, is our general discussion and agreement appropriate enough to move on to the next item then, since we can't vote on this item? Okay. Thank you, everyone, for this discussion. We'll move on to the next discussion, which is the
We'll move on to the next discussion, which is the discussion of the proposed criteria for the artist grant request for proposals. And this ad hoc subcommittee was included by Chair Hernandez, as well as Commissioners, oh my gosh, Commissioners Russell and Ochoa. So, do you all have something to present or questions to discuss with the commission today?
I was part of one meeting, but I think there was a meeting that preceded my entrance on the ad hoc. We discussed some very similar concepts, like the idea of having two strands of funding, one for seed funding and one for sustained funding. In my notes, I also included, we included the idea that for sustained funding, we would expect some kind of documentation from the community, like a community letter, to indicate the impact that such an artist project had on the community as a way to sort of justify that we would fund a project that was, so, under the current RFP or the last RFP, we did not, we did not allow applicants for consecutive grant cycles of a single project. So this would be a way to change that, but we added this additional layer of documentation or suggest additional layer of documentation.
Does this subcommittee feel that more time is needed to pull together a more concrete proposal for this RFP process?
Ended the last meeting believing we did not, as I remember. There are a couple of other points, though, that we did discuss. One was that for each grant, the RFP would include additional points or percentages, actually. I put down points, but I believe TRAM felt percentages were better because they were more flexible. So, an example might be that they would get like 10 points based on whatever the percentage scale is for local residents who live or work in the city with some kind of proof. And we might have a window of like six months that they have lived or worked in the city. Example. And just to show you how that's different from the current RFP process or the 2024, 25, we listed eligibility as somebody who must currently live or create work in Santa Ana or create work benefiting Santa Ana residents or stimulate the economy of Santa Ana. So, living or working here was really one of many variables that could be considered for eligibility. So we are sort of tightening that eligibility, if you will, and possibly putting some kind of numeric percentage or point value attached to it. One more example, in the 2024, 25 artist grant process, 40% of the points were given for artistic merit or project merit. 25 were, 25% were given for the artist portfolio. 25% were given for community impact, which I think was a very vague category. And I think that's something that we sort of challenged, like, maybe it's better that they live or work in Santa Ana than have a community impact. And then 10% was allocated for need, financial need, which actually means that they have found other sources of funding. They're not relying entirely on the city's funding for the project, if I'm interpreting that correctly.
This was some time ago and a lot has happened since then in my life. But thank you for, for bringing up those, those items. So, the one thing that I don't recall or don't remember was that if the 10% for folks that lived in Santa Ana, was that like, like bonus points on top of the 100% total? Or was that incorporated into the 100% that possible?
I believe TRAM, it has to be included in the 100%.
Yeah, so I think if what we're trying to do here is, is build equity within the percentages, then probably this would make sense for it to be extra credit, to be an additional 10% that they could get, that no, but that other groups that did not live in Santa Ana could get. And as far as, you said 40% for the artistic. What was, what was the word, what was that?
Artist, project or artistic merit.
Artistic merit and 25% for artist profile.
Portfolio.
Portfolio, sorry. Which, which means like, like the scope of their work, right? Like what they've done in the past. Yeah, I'm also kind of, like, the community impact is a bit vague, right? Like, first, like murals have like such a deep historic impact in this community and just the collective aspect of it versus, you know, somebody that has a crew of two or three, you know, that does a, some, you know, like a painting for a building and stuff. So, in any case, I'm, like, I think the one thing that I was more concerned with was around, yeah, the, the living in Santa Ana. So, based on what, what Commissioner Russell just mentioned, as far as the changes to, from the RFPs from what they were previously to what they are now, to make it so that folks that live in Santa Ana exclusively are the ones that could, would get this 10% additional bonus percentages. Is, is that, is that correct?
So, live or work is what I think we, I think we were flexible on live or work. With some kind of proof. I know there are other cities that require applicants to upload, like, some kind of like a driver's license or something like that that would, would show that. So I would love, for example, maybe staff could find examples of that or ways that Santa Ana could do that using our submittable platform. I don't know exactly what the features are of that platform, but I would definitely, just considering some of the events that have happened over the last year, I think that would be a really good step forward and it would show that transparency that so many artists are coming forward and asking from us.
Yeah, that sounds right. Yeah, so live or work with proof. Believe we talked about like, work could be like, if your studio, you have a studio, like artist studio, business, you know, that. I mean, if you work, meaning like you have a pay stub from a business in the city that you could show, that would constitute as, as working for me and/or studio. Which a studio could, you know, you don't, you don't own the studio, but you could have a letter from the person that is, you know, having you be there or, you know, work out of there, for example, like the Grand Central Arts Center, that could show like I am a Santa Ana artist.
I think that's considered like a temporary, like commissioned job compared to like continuous like pay stubs, as he was mentioning. Because I, I can see like someone doing like a one-time job and then they put that down in their, their application, you know, as work for the city. So I don't. No, I don't think grants would count, but more actual like equity coming in from the city and the businesses.
This is certainly a great deal more specific than our previous guidelines have been. So thank you for your discussion on this. While we are on the topic of the artist grant, I do want to also touch base on the, the theme for the upcoming artist grant, which is another conversation that we had started several months ago as well. We've, we've moved through a couple of different iterations of this theme. And where we currently are is, given everything that is happening in this world right now, this is the time when we need to think about what makes each of us human? What makes each of, what makes our humanity? And what store, what kinds of stories need to be told in order to highlight that humanity that we all share? So, given this theme, I'd also like to hear from my fellow commissioners what you think about this new iteration of this theme. A lot more expansive than it had been in the past to allow for a great deal more creative projects that still touch on the same commonalities that we have as people here.
Did we decide on a theme? Is it secure or we're trying to figure that out? Okay.
So, did we mention the theme was something, something around migration? Is that, yeah, like.
I feel like that was mentioned before, but.
Migration is beautiful or something like that.
Right, but I don't know if that, we didn't land on that, right?
Yeah.
That was what we had discussed in the July meeting. And then in August, we went on to talk about how that might be too prescriptive for all artists to be able to fit their work into, which was why we had a discussion in August about how to make this more expansive. How do we turn it into a more open-ended question that people can respond to instead?
If I could ask, does it have to have a theme? It does? Okay.
Typically without a theme, there's no grounding idea. And it just makes the projects feel a little bit more random.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think migration is, is really expansive, you know? Because everybody, unless you're Native American, like, we all have a migration story. You know, it might not be immediate, like I came to this country when I was six. So mine is very much, you know, recent. Other folks, they're family members, other folks are great, great grandparents or whatever. But perhaps, but perhaps outside of migration, just family history would be perhaps like one that would go a step above that, you know, that folks can talk about. Whether it's their Irish lineage or their, you know, indigenous lineage or, you know, or, or their Michoacan or, you know, just Philippine Vietnamese, you know? And, and, you know, so then within that could be migration, but it could also just be like part of, you know, just telling the stories of, you know, of the families that, that live here in Santa Ana that, you know, all of which came from somewhere else, whether it's, you know, recently or some, many, many years ago.
So I like the theme of migration, but what also sounds like is like unity, unity of like different cultures coming together to the city of Santa Ana. We have a rich history of Chinese, Vietnamese, Mexican, Filipino. So it just, like you say, everybody has stories that they can share. And our city does have a huge cultural stuff. So I think unity and migration would probably be the theme.
I do like, I agree with Commissioner Bermejo that having some connection to the city makes sense just as a way that these grants might illustrate our pride in the city. And I think that is a beautiful framing for this.
I like what you said with unity. I think that one feels, hmm, a little bit more open, I guess, just allowing more stories to be told, I guess. Also family history, quite honestly, but unity, I feel, that one got me.
Any other input from other commissioners?
I second the idea that storytelling or, you know, what are the stories that we want to tell about this place or about why we're here or why we love this place? How we've survived, you know, challenges, particularly recent challenges.
So it does seem like there's general consensus on what stories should be told that either delve into family history or touch upon our shared humanity or unity that we as Santa Ana residents all share. It seems like the general consensus here. All right, and I'm getting nods from my fellow commissioners. And so with that, I'll close this item and move us on to the. So, it needs to be wordsmithed a little bit, but in general, like what sorts of stories should be told around family history or around our shared humanity that bring us together as Santa Ana residents? Of family history or our shared humanity that unite us as Santa Ana residents?
Commissioner Russell, I'm happy to, to work with you on, you know, like finalizing the draft. Or if you have it already, then, you know, based on the conversation that we had today, then I'm, I'm good with the notes that you've shared today.
I think the one change that I see is changing that language that I quoted earlier, that, you know, they must live or work or, 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 and maybe we designate that. I guess, could we remove that? And then at the very end, say additional points will be allocated for those who can prove they live or work over the last six months in the city. So, the last RFP, which I imagine we're just gonna take the old RFP and adjust it. Is that correct? We would just literally delete the item that says they must currently live or work or create work benefiting Santa Ana residents or stimulate the economy and replace that with something at the bottom that says additional points will be allocated. I think we'd said 10, I wrote down 10 points when we were talking. I don't know if we, that's been changed, but. I do remember, though, you talking about percentages and points and that it's better to do one versus the other. And I could have sworn you said percentages.
Yeah, I recall a 10%.
Can you, can you remind us, is it 10 points or 10 percentage points? So, the current RFP would be 100 points? And so. 10 points? And are we good with that, me removing that language about they must currently live or work? Or it's very, you know, wishy-washy and then adding additional points will be allocated? Those who live or work? And I don't know how the proving the residency will work, so I'll need some guidance on that.
I would say, you know, utility bills, a driver's license, other deed for living, for working, maybe some sort of a lease agreement, a business license. Because what I clearly hear from the commissioners is that they want, you want folks that are physically located, either living or physically located doing business, not that they have done work in the city. We want people that are physically located here and so we, we can. We want people that are physically located here and so we, we can come up with ideas there. And on the points, we're, if, it sounds like we were doing out of 90 out of 100, so that, but the 10 points are extra. So are we going to cap it at, right now, we got 40% for artistic merit and then 25% for community input, 25% for community or for the artist portfolio. That's 90. Do we want to add? Okay, okay, okay. Because I thought that it could be like 110, somebody could get a 110%.
Yeah, technically, yeah.
Technically, yeah, okay.
All right, with that closes our two current ad hoc subcommittees. And with that, we'll move into staff member comments. Does staff have any comments they wish to share with the commission? All right, and does the commission have any comments they wish to share? Commission members, please note that no member may speak more than once until all have had an opportunity to speak. Also, the commission may limit our commission comments to three minutes each.
Thank you Chair Vu for your leadership today. There was, you know, some, some good conversations here and I'm, and I'm glad that we're able to, to move forward with, with these items. And I want to welcome to the commission, Commissioner Bermejo? Bermejo? It's with an R?
Yeah.
So they spelled it wrong here. It's B E M E J O?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, so Bermejo. Yeah, so, yeah, I'm glad that, that you're joining us and hopefully we'll be able to get you on some of these subcommittees and such and get you all involved in the things. There's so much good work to be done, so I'm, I'm welcome and looking forward to your leadership. Yeah, so there, there is, I think there's a real opportunity and, and a lot of us have done a lot of advocating for, you know, the funds that, you know, we're going to be able to, you know, to provide for the community through the event sponsorships. We did, you know, gave a lot of money to a lot of great orgs. I'm hoping that we're going to get new orgs that will be able to apply for, for these funds. I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, tram and city staff can work with social media to, you know, to promote the city, you know, to the city's social media pages so that more, more folks can apply for these grants, because I, I still feel sad when I hear people that are like, oh, you, you were giving funds out. It's like, yeah, we were, where were you? So, you know, again, it's, it's, it's upon us to, for all of us to, to tap into our networks individually and to get, you know, people to, to apply for these. Yeah, and so I'm, I'm, yeah, I haven't been here for a couple of meetings, I think meetings have been canceled and such. I did want to address, you know, the emails about, you know, that, that the notes are, the minutes are not, you know, like adequately sharing what people are, are saying, that are public comments or whatnot, so, and I think, you know, we're, we're being made aware and hopefully moving forward, you know, folks can, can see that their, the spirit of their comments, though perhaps brief, can be included in that. So I'm just hoping that, that we can make those things right and in any other items that, that were brought up by, by our public comment individual. So I, I know that us being designated at, as an art district by the state would be a big deal. I know that there's a lot of folks that have been working hard on that, on that front, you know, that, that gives us an opportunity to be one of very few, you know, areas across the state that, you know, that has the ability to receive more funds. I'm not sure exactly what that entails or what the dollar amount is, you know, for those that are designated, but I know that it does put us in a spotlight, you know, based on my attending the convention for the California Arts Foundation and all those folks that are doing that good work. So, and if we are using the names of individuals and organizations, what's a good process, you know, to let them know? Or I'm not sure if a permission is necessary per se, but some sort of way of where we can involve them and, or let them know, like, hey, you know, we're, we're applying for this and we love the work that you did with this past grant sponsorship that we gave you. So, but I'm, I'm sure there's, you know, things are moving and, you know, folks are just trying to do the best that they can, but, um, you know, I'm sure we can land in a happy place where people can be recognized and be, feel included and, and us, and we can all benefit from being labeled as an art district. And we're going to have a big festival, my last call, my last thing, called Noche de Altares and Viva la Vida, coming up in a couple of weeks. And also it'll be first Saturday of every month, art walk, so I'm just excited because that time for me as, you know, somebody that was part of Noche de Altares for six years and, you know, and helped to organize, you know, with, with that space and bringing together all of that, the altars and remembering our, our, our folks that have passed on, you know, it, it's so important. So, because it just shows the very best of Santana, just the colors and the, the pain and the joy and the, the unity that brings us everybody together, that makes our city just like a, a golden gem in Orange County. We're the best, but that's me personally biased feeling, so, but thank you very much, staff and, and colleagues for, for all your work that you do for this, for all the work. Thank you.
I did have a question to your point, Commissioner Hernandez, in terms of the marketing of these upcoming, or this upcoming grant. And I don't know, is there a, a social media arm of the city or a way, for, for example, the events that have taken place that were funded and have been funded this past year? Is there a way to put together? I mean, I think the, the best way to tell a story is through visual, through, whether it's through photos or, or a reel, of maybe gathering information from the different grants that have been funded and that they've had their, whether it's an event or their art. Can that be put together in, in a real quick sizzle that we can put on social media, that we could share to let them know, hey, this is the work that's been taking place, that's been funded and funding is coming up again to get the word out to the community that artists can apply? I mean, what do we do in terms of marketing, I guess is my question? Yeah, there's no way that, that one person could capture everything in the city. So you're the one woman show.
We actually have, we have economic development staff that can put that together. Yeah.
Oh. Is it possible to ask each of the organizations that received a grant to send something? I, I don't know how, what the protocol or how that would work. I just find that when you have something exciting to put out there and with a link, here's, here's a link to the application, I feel like that would be the best, best, most economical way to get the word out and it's exciting to see what's happened over this past year with the funding, just a suggestion.
Sorry, just to elaborate on that, I come from a marketing background, so if we were to open this up as a workshop, free workshop exclusively to only Santa Ana residents, and then we were able to charge people coming outside of Santa Ana, we could funnel that money into the artist grant, like you were saying, since we're not going to be using, or if we don't use that extra 5,000, I feel that if we generate sales from people coming outside of the city, we can allocate that money into it by also promoting and marketing, say, this is a, a free workshop, two-day seminar, whatever it is, to exclusively only Santa Ana artists and business owners, where everybody get a bigger turnout. So, but just some comments on that.
I mean, I just, social media is marketing at this point, right? Pretty much, that's all it is. And so that's the best way to get the information out. Just trying to think, how do we get the word out in a wider space?
I believe each of the artists have given presentations and I imagine if with permission was given or you're asked, some of that material could be utilized. I also have a question or just a request for an update at a future meeting. The restore art proposals, I know that we, I was looking back at some notes and it looked like we anticipated that they would be already in motion at this point, but I don't think they are. I know we've selected the top five candidates, but the process started in January. I think in June, we identified the top candidates who were voted on by like a subcommittee, if I'm correct. But, you know, it's here's October and I don't know that funding has been given or those projects have started, so I'd love an update on that, being how long that's spanned out. I also just wanted to touch in on the topic about not seeing the comments and maybe comments being captured inaccurately. I know one of the public commenters at the previous meeting felt like her comment was not captured very well. And on that note, that's why I did not approve the minutes because she, she reached out to me personally to convey that information. But I also appreciate Mike Garcia for replying quite swiftly with remedies to that and I would just appreciate as a commission if we could also get updates on, if there's comments that we need to review from the past or, or other ways that we, we are kept up to date, because these comments really do are, are very important to our decision making. Like the comment that was inaccurate was about the theme and someone came to dispute or, or to challenge the idea of the theme we were looking at. And so if you're, if you were absent from that meeting or, you know, are looking back at your notes and we don't have that information, then it does impact our ability to make decisions. And I also just want to share a few events that are coming up. Well, I want to also just thank Commissioner Bermejo, it was great to see you at the Swayo Design Session. Thank you for the invitation. It was very interesting. I'm very curious to see how that evolves, because I know if I remember correctly, the timeline for that mural going up is like a month. So I don't know if there'll be future design sessions, others can join, but it was very, very interesting. This Friday at the Grand Central Arts Center, there's a really exciting merging of literature, literary work, theater and culinary called the Bean Monologues. It's part of the larger event and just wanted to spotlight that actually it features the Breath of Fire, one of our local arts founders and champion of the arts, Sarah Guerrero. It also features a chef from La Hut, which is another restaurant that's local, he's been in the restaurant industry here before, and then a local musician, Ally Coyle, along with other bigger heavyweights in the writing world. The Wooden Floor also has their auditions this Saturday, if you know anybody who's interested in ballet and more, because The Wooden Floor is known for not just really strong and intense ballet instruction, but also academic outreach, mentorship, field trips, I mean, what the, I cannot, it's incredible what they manage to do. And in addition to the Noche de Altares, the Heritage Museum has a Dia de Muertos Festival coming up on Sunday, October 26th. And we've been, I've been in the past with my family and very much enjoyed it. OSHA is doing, there's a lot, there's not as many haunted houses or haunted events this year, although there was one last week, but OSHA has a haunted maze that's always kind of fun, because you really get to see the arts community in a different light. They're not on stage, but they're performing as well. And, and there's also a powwow coming up at the Heritage Museum on November 2nd and we don't have events like that very often, so, and the Concert Band at Santa Ana College, I want to call them out particularly because of all the attention to Santa Ana College in the last week. And then lastly, if you haven't been to Grand Central to see Roger Ives' exhibition, I see them run and hide every time. I highly recommend it. He, it's a meditation really on being, having color blindness as an artist and it's very experiential, so you walk around the space and really get to experience it, but I just want to call out how he's highlighting, you know, the disability community in some ways and the arts community at the same time, and we don't also see that as often. And there's two actually exhibitions at Grand Central that highlight the disability community. And again, we want to be as inclusive as we can with the arts and so if you haven't made it out there, I highly recommend it.
All right, thank you everyone for your comments and discussion today. This meeting is officially adjourned. The next regular meeting is scheduled for Thursday, November 20th, 2025, at 5:30 PM. Thank you and good night, everyone.